Good evening, everyone. I'm Shannon Rutherford, the Town Planner for Farmington. This is the Plan and Zoning Commission. We are going to start with a roll call of our Commission members for this evening. And I say Matthew Bandle. Okay, and Matt is not in attendance this evening. Robert Canto is absent this evening. Peter Zarella.
I'm here. Good evening, everyone.
Scott Halston.
Here.
David Saint Germain.
Here.
Liz Sanford.
Here.
And our alternates Bruce Polsky.
Here.
Michael Koster.
Here.
And Mike Tucci. And Mike is absent this evening. So we have two regular members absent, Bandle and Canto, Mr. Chair, so you can see the alternates, please.
All right. Thank you, Shannon. Well, welcome everybody to the September 22 Town Planner and zoning meeting. We do have a little housekeeping to take care of. So Mike, would you please take Bob's zoning seat tonight? And Bruce, take Matt's, please?
I will.
Thank you. All right, let's go straight to the legal notice. Liz, mind?
Okay. Notice is hereby given that the Town Plan and Zone Commission will hold a hybrid in-person and online public hearing on September 22, 2025 at 7:00 p.m. in the Town Hall Council Chambers on the following application. Moren Tree Service LLC, application for special permit and site plan approval for proposed warehouse facility for storage of equipment for tree service company and areas of outside storage at 55 Depot Place and 8280 Forest Street in the C1 Zone. Interested parties are encouraged to participate in this hybrid public hearing. Participation in person is at 1 Monteith Drive, Town Hall, Town Council Chambers, or online participation is via the link to the meeting on the Town of Farmington's website. Copy. This proposal is available online or by calling the Planning Department at Farmington Town Hall dated at Farmington, Connecticut this 28th day of August 2025.
Thank you, Liz. Appreciate that. All right, let's jump right in. We've got a few new business items, three to be exact. So our first is 1600 New Burton Avenue LLC.
Mr. Chair, we've got Kyle Richards on the line.
Okay, thank you.
Can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Great. Mr. Chair, fellow commissioners, thank you for the time, Kyle Richards, for the applicant. The matter in front of you, I think, should be pretty straightforward and simple. This is the front entry signage for 1600 New Britain Avenue, which is the 90-unit affordable housing, I should say, mixed-income community that we have, are very far along with. We're seeking to, it's ambitious, but get for buildings one and two, we're looking to try and get COs before Halloween. And so we obviously need a front sign and some other signs on the buildings in order to open up and, you know, allow for residents to take occupancy. So the sign that, the sign that we'd like you to focus your attention on is the one that will be located in the center median of the entrance drive. And what you're looking at here is what we like to call a tavern sign. So it's a very traditional-looking, double-sided sign that will, of course, have the address 1600, but also the name of the community, which is Trailside. And, you know, very, very traditional-style design, predominantly white. The sign is 10 feet in height. It's a total square feet of 11.82, which we believe both fall within the confines of your regulations. And the sign's predominantly made of welded aluminum and some PVC elements mainly on the trim. It will be uplit. There's no internal illumination on this sign. We have two, yep, there's Shannon circling the proposed fixture that will be illuminating the sign from the ground, you know, very tastefully, not to be, you know, it won't be, as I mentioned, internally illuminated. So I don't think it will be overwhelmingly lit up by any stretch. But that's the, that is the sign that we are proposing for your consideration tonight. We've, we've used this type of tavern style on several other communities in town. The one that's really sticking out in my head is Yorkshire, Yorkshire Village, right near the rear entrance to the Yukon Health Center. And I think they're tasteful and they, they present well and they, and they've kind of stand the test of time. So that's the, that is the signage that we're proposing at the entrance. Also, as part of your package, you'll see that we've included just signs for the buildings that we'd like to, you know, they're called address plaques that we'd like to place above the, above the sliding doors and on the building so they can be identified easily by residences, residents, you know, emergency staff and personnel. Pretty simple design that will mimic the stylistically the text on the, on the center entrance sign. And then I think we, there's not a tremendous number of signs on this site, which is nice. We're going to highlight the office with a standalone sign. We're going to highlight the bike trail. As you'll note, and with the name Trailside, we have direct access to the, to the rails for trails in the rear of our site. And we'll have a, obviously have a sign that will highlight where the break in the fences will be located in order to, to identify the location to get onto the trail. And then there's another sign that will just highlight where packages will be delivered. We have two buildings, Buildings Five and Six, that are, if you, if you may not remember, are three-story walk-up buildings. Those are the buildings where the folks from FAVR, the population with intellectual disabilities, will be predominantly located. And there's no good area to receive packages in those buildings. Every other, every other building has doorsteps, so they can easily be delivered to the doorsteps. But in those two buildings, we thought it'd be prudent to just notify that the packages will be accepted in the, in the clubhouse, which is located in Building 10. So not many signs, which is a nice thing. And I think unless I'm missing something big, Shannon, that's, that's really, that's really all I have. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I just want to point out one other thing, and that's the location of the sign.
Yeah, thank you.
So the, the location of the sign is in the center median, as Mr. Richards noted. It will be the, this is the site plan that was done at the time of permitting. The sign regulation for the height and size of the sign, it can be within the first two-thirds of the setback. So it obviously can't be in the right of way. And it probably isn't going to be right out here at the tip because it's going to create a sightline issue. But it is going to be physically located a little closer to the road than what is schematically shown here. We will work with the applicant to ensure that it is positioned appropriately in complies zoning regulation. But it can be within the first two-thirds, a sign that's 10 feet high and less than 12 square feet. So it is going to slide forward compared to what is shown schematically here.
Thanks, Shannon.
That's it. I don't have anything further to add.
Okay. Let me, thank you for the presentation, Kyle. Let me turn it over to the commissioners. Liz, you're up first today.
Wow. No, thank you for the presentation. I think the sign is nicely understated and, but also communicates all it needs. So thanks for your presentation.
Thank you.
Dave?
Yeah, I agree with Liz. No questions? Bruce?
I think, I think the signs are tasteful, straightforward, too. Just a quick one. A vehicle exiting will have no visibility issues with where it's placed to be able to look to turn left or right there with vehicles.
Correct.
I assume that's good. So then, no issue.
Mike?
The packages sign, is that visible from the road? Where, like, where are you placing those signs? Is that for the delivery truck drivers or for the residents?
Yeah, that's, it's predominantly, I would say, for the delivery truck drivers. But as we found, they, once, you know, in the event there's a delivery driver who's new to the community, generally, they, they tend to be familiar, given the number of packages that will be delivered to a community of this size. But those will be, Shannon, can you go back to the, to the elevation of the, of the signs?
Of course.
Yeah.
Of course.
So the, we're going to fix that, we're likely going to affix that to the building, probably by the door. It can, it could be a standalone, but we thought, we thought affixing it to the building near the entrance to those buildings would be, would be a good
That's an eight-foot sign, I see.
Well, it says.
Or is that an eight?
Eight inches.
It says three inches. It says three inches by eight inches. So it's very.
I didn't see the two hashtag.
Yeah.
Never mind. It's a, it's a small sign.
It's very small.
Right.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mike.
Yep.
Okay. Peter?
No questions for me. Thank you for the presentation. And I agree, I like the design of it.
Great.
Yeah, thank you, Kyle. I don't, I don't have any questions or concerns either. It's pretty straightforward. Agree with my fellow commissioners. One more check. Anybody questions come up? All right, can we get a motion in a second?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the application by 1600 New Britain Ave. LLC, located at 1600 New Britain Ave, for a new sign post, new post sign with lighting and NBOZ zone, with the condition that the applicant works with the planner's office on placement of that sign.
Second. All those in favor? I oppose. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Have a nice night.
You, too.
Thank you.
All right, our second new business item is RTX Corporation. Welcome back.
Hi, good evening. For the record, my name is Henry Withers. I'm a landscape architect with SLAM Collaborative in Glessamer, Connecticut. And I'm joined by Andrew White, who's with Ty and Bond. He's our civil engineer. Last presentation, we were, we needed to provide with a little bit more information, provide staff a little bit more information on both drainage and lighting. We've done that fairly late in the game. So, but we did speak with Bruce today. He has a few questions. I think Shannon and Bruce would like a little bit more time to review. But we feel that what we've provided them and what we've designed will be able to meet with their expectations. And we would like to consider, you know, a conditional approval that we could, we could get that approved by staff. We've resubmitted a little, little updates to the drawings as well. I think Shannon brought up in the last meeting that we had the split duct on top of that guardhouse. And we've lowered that down to be just in front of the guardhouse, just at grade. It'll be up on a very low curb. So it won't be visible. It'll be part of that planting island there. And that's really actually how the architect that's working on it, Paul, prefers it anyway. And so that, that worked out well. It kind of cleans that, that whole look up a bit. And I, I think that's primarily the changes. You know, we also provided some photometrics that Shannon and Bruce will need to go through with us a little bit further. Again, we don't spill out, we're at zero-foot candles on the, spilling out onto Farm Springs Road. So we should be fine with that as well. We'll make sure, again, that we go through that thoroughly with Shannon and Bruce to ensure that we meet regulatory requirements of not spilling. And, and I think I presented to you last time, you could see in the, some of the models, it's the same fixtures that are there today, where our intent is to match those both in height and the light source for those areas. And the photometric that we provided lists those as well. So shows the, shows the fixture. And, you know, the contractor that'll be working on it is actually the original contractor that did this work. So we know that they're available in the same model and fixture. So should be no problem. Shannon, I don't know if there was anything else that I've missed.
Impervious pavement? Impervious pavement?
The porous pavement, yeah. So we have taken your recommendation that was suggested last time, or, you know, the idea that you suggested last time of making areas of the site porous pavement, so that we are no longer needing to require an increase in the 40% pervious. So at this point, both, you know, both new areas of parking, both the area near Eight, where Shannon's pointing, and the executive parking that's down in front of the building, as well as the little loop drive going back out, are porous pavement. And that gets us under the 40%. So we should be covered with that. Again, Andrew's going to need to work with Shannon and Bruce to just clarify some questions that they have relative to the drainage of that. I don't know if you want to say anything briefly, Andrew, about how you're, you're treating those areas, so.
Good evening, members of the Commission. My name is Andrew White, Ty and Bond, registered professional engineer in the state. So as Henry has described, we do have the three areas of porous pavement. This will be four inches of asphalt over a stone bed that's over than a crushed stone reservoir. The system will be underdrained, but will be, the underdrain is a foot and a half above the bottom of the stone. So it will allow for exfiltration within the natural soils. We did do some onsite soil investigation. Definitely found that the soils aren't as good as the soil geography says it should be. So it is a little tighter, and that was accounted for in our calculations. And so we are meeting the state's requirements. It's in the 2024 manual. So we do have water quality volume provided within those three porous pavement areas, as well as an underground infiltration system that's located just west of the guard shack that's proposed. And so we'll be providing the water quality area. We're reducing peak flow to the watersheds, even with, you know, Henry saying that we're essentially matching what you consider for coverage, the 40%. In our calculations, we were a little more conservative, and we include porous pavement as an impervious, and then account for that in our stone reservoir. So we don't, in our drainage calculations, don't give ourselves the benefit of, of it being porous, and we capture all that. So that's a, the quick, high-level overview of the drainage. But everything is decreased. We meet town and state standards.
All right, thank you. You guys good? Turn it over.
Thanks. Shannon, you have anything else? That's the end of our presentation.
No, I don't, I, that covered the, the summary. With that, with the change in impervious coverage, and first, I'd have time to review that today, and concurs that it will be less than 40%, and that the pervious pavement makes up approximately 4.7% of the total pavement area. And traditionally, we've allowed up to roughly five, five, six percent. So that falls within what I would consider our maximum allotment of porous pavement being used for an allocation to correct for an impervious coverage. So that would then eliminate the need for the five, six vote for the impervious coverage. There still is a five, six vote for the landscape area, for this deferred parking, not for the parking, but for the landscape setback between the edge of parking and the property line. But it's an adjoining office facility. So I don't find that to be overly concerning. And again, the intent is to defer it as Mr. Withers explained at the last meeting, that the parking lot, and we can go to some of the aerials, the parking lot is not heavily utilized on a regular basis. And I think there's, there's some representatives from RTX on the phone that could even speak to that this evening if we, if there were questions regarding that. So it would, the staff has looked at it enough. We're okay with the, if the commission is. But we were okay with the staff comments being a condition of a decision. There is one five, six vote is for the landscape buffer on the, I'm going to say, well, I guess, southern end, the north arrows over here. So southern end or western end, depending on how you want to look at that. The deferred parking itself, as I noted in the agenda review, does not require a five, six vote. It's simply really at the commission's discretion. Up to 25% of the parking can be deferred. Obviously, it's much less than that, the way that calculation is running. So we will need the note added on to the plans, but that's rather perfunctory. At this point, we can add that in with the staff review. So that's, that's where we are with it. Like, you know, we certainly can ask questions of them or of myself. I'm happy to offer any other clarification.
Okay. Thank you, Shannon. So let me, let me turn it over to the commissioners for questions. If Liz, any questions?
I'm trying to remember back to last meeting. Were we going to, were you planning on adding more light fixtures or just deciding where the ones are going?
We shifted, we shifted a few around just to make sure the photometrics provided a very spread coverage of the, of the light levels. It's pretty much what you see right now, or what you saw in the model.
Okay, so it's, we're not talking about ten more?
No, there's approximately five. So the two are being relocated, and there's about five new ones to get the, the correct coverage on this loop drive, and then for this executive parking. So there's one or two that were moved, and there's roughly five, five new ones all up in this front area for the security.
Okay. Okay, that makes sense. And I think, I think that's it for now. Thank you for the presentation.
I'm just checking more for you, Shannon, in terms of the items or consideration, where we are in those.
Sure. Let's see. Stormwater calculations are required. They've been submitted. They're under review. There is a, they did, as Mr. Withers noticed, they did speak with Bruce today. There's going to be some additional follow-up. To clarify, it may or may not warrant some small modifications. As I discussed with Bruce at the end of the day today, what you are seeing on the surface is not going to change really dramatically. There might be a catchphrase and shift. The trench drains at the driveway entrance, we've got philosophical differences perhaps on that. But the overall schematic of what you're looking at isn't going to change. So, but the, the drainage is submitted. So that's in. Light pole fixture and specifications are on the photometrics plan. I will be honest, I did not look at this today, but this is something that's easy enough for staff to review. It is in. It's up on the screen. It does show where the new light poles are. So the new light poles are these darker circles. And then there's two up here. And then we've got to get, I don't know if it captured the undersoffit lighting. It does look like, so the undersoffit lighting on the building, the new guard shack was captured. So staff should be able to review these. And quite honestly, if they match the existing fixtures, we're not going to, it should be fine. So that's fine. Three applicants shall provide information regarding anticipated hours of operation of the guardhouse. I believe we touched on that last, at the last meeting. Generally, kind of a seven to seven thing, but it may be extended as needed. It didn't sound like it would be a 24-hour operation. There is 24-hour for the campus, not necessarily for the guard facility. Commissions shall consider the request for additional impervious coverage in the landscape setback. And I just, we went through that. Landscape setback is in, or the impervious coverage is no longer an issue. The landscape setback will require the five, six vote. And then, of course, we would like the engineering comments, obviously, to be addressed to the satisfaction of the town staff.
Okay. That setback is, I'm seeing is reduction in 20-foot landscape setback. Is that the part we're talking about?
Correct. So I've got.
That's one still in.
Correct. The project will require five, six vote for reduction in the 20-foot landscape setback to accommodate the deferred parking. So that's what I was referring to. So this deferred parking area, obviously, if it's not constructed immediately, it's lawn. It's not an issue. It's at the time, if and when it should ever need to be constructed. I would say it's about 10 feet off the property line, roughly, at its nearest, maybe, maybe 15 feet here and 10, it's, it's, the property line is, is here. And then you can see the edge of parking and the sidewalk. Henry, the sidewalks, five feet, four feet?
Yes, it's five feet.
So we're, I don't know, 10, 10 to 12 feet here, and maybe 16 feet at the top. And so you'll have some sidewalk and some landscaping, and they are able to grade up to the property line. It's not just the, the regulation calls for 20 feet, but it is office to office. RTX owns both still, or no?
No, they owned 10 Farm Springs, eight Farm Springs is, they lease.
They, okay, they lease out. Got it. So, but it is office. Okay?
Yes, very helpful. Thank you. I have no other questions.
Okay. Bruce?
I think, between my notes and the current discussion, I think I'm covered.
Great. Thank you. Mike?
No more questions. Everything's been answered.
Peter?
Thank you. No more questions for me. Thank you again for the presentation.
Yeah, I don't think I have any questions at this point either. Anybody come up with any others as we were going along? Or are we good? Any concerns related to this? I think it's gotten pretty straightforward.
Right, as long as the, the town's comments are addressed this.
Yep.
That's.
Okay.
It just puts that in the.
Yeah, everybody's comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Okay, just want to double check. Okay. Why don't we get a motion in a second?
Do we put it all in one, or do we need to separate the?
That's always the question.
The five, six vote?
If you think you can do it all together, if you think there's a consensus, which generally seems like it is, so it can be all in one.
Why don't we do it together?
So it'd be an approval of the application and the buffer, the, the reduction to the buffer as presented, reduction to the 20-foot landscape setback as presented.
I will give it a try.
Part, as part of the job, Dave.
All right. So they can make a motion that we approve the site plan modification made by RTX Corporation at 10 Farm Springs Road for a new security entrance in the PR zone, including a reduction in the 20-foot landscape setback to accommodate the deferred parking in accordance with Article 4, Section 13B6, as presented.
Second.
I was just going to say.
Could we cover it, Shannon, or?
Town comments, so the dress.
And.
As presented.
Okay.
That's fine. Okay.
Second still.
All those in favor? I. Opposed. Abstentions. Motion passes.
Thank, thank you very much.
Thanks for coming back.
And thanks for answering your questions.
All right, we have one application to accept. Item number three. Bring a motion in a second, please.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the application for text amendment to zoning regulations, Article 1, Section 9. Definitions, Article 2, Section 1, residential 80, 40, 30 zones, R80, R40, R30. Permitted uses, Article 4, Section 8, parking, Section 8A, parking in residential properties, commercial vehicle parking, made by the Town and Plan and Zoning Commission and associated text edits to Section 8B and Section 13, and Schedule section eight B and section thirteen, and scheduled public hearing with recommended hearing date of October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five.
That was well done, Dave, by the way.
Second.
All is in favor? Abstentions, motion passes, thanks everybody. All right, we have one public hearing tonight. Before we jump into that, just a, a couple of guidelines. The process looks fairly similar to what you saw with our, uh, new business so far, so while the applicant present, um, the commission will ask questions and then we'll open it up to the public to provide any, um, feedback. For or in opposition to the application, we'll start with anybody in the room that wants to come up to the podium, and then we'll go to folks online. Um, and we'll go from there, so we just ask for everybody's time, everybody's volunteer here, just to keep comments within about five minutes. Um, to keep the meeting moving along, so we appreciate the public's comment and look forward to it, and with that being said, we'll turn it over to Moore and Tree Services.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, everyone. My name is Robert Reeve. I'm with Scully Nixon Reeve at seventy-nine Main Street in Unionville. We represent, uh, the owner and the applicant for a special permit and site plan approval, and that is the Moore and Tree Service. Chad Moore is here tonight together with his dad Craig. They've operated, uh, a tree service in Unionville for several decades. Uh, and their, uh, town business, they'd like to stay in town, they're growing and, and they need more space, and that's why we're here tonight. I'll make a few introductory comments, um, uh, give you some background, and then I'm gonna ask Chad to tell you, a, a bit about the business, a bit about the operation, what, uh, what he sees, uh, going on in the, in this location, uh, if, if he gets an approval. Uh, Chad has installed the signs on the property and, uh, I believe he submitted to the staff the required certified mail receipts. Uh, Seamus Moran of H and H, uh, Engineering and Mystic is the civil engineer, uh, on the, uh, on the job. He had a conflict that prevented him from driving here this evening, but he is, uh, I hope available on the Zoom, then he'll follow Chad, uh, shortly. So Moore and Tree Service, uh, owns two adjacent parcels of land. Shannon's gonna show you where they are. Yeah, here we go. Uh, there's the, there's the overall side plan. They are at the end of Depot Place. So if you're on Route one seventy-seven, uh, and you're headed towards Plainville, I guess, just after leaving Unionville Center and you take a left, uh, on Depot Place, you, you start to go in and, you're going along the rail trail and you, the daily grind is on your right, and then you go down past all the, the various businesses there, and you get all the way down to the end, and there's two empty lots down at the end there, and, and Moore and Tree Service owns both of those lots. Uh, so they're, they're just south of the rail trail as it approaches Unionville Center. And, uh, as I said, they're in the C one industrial zone, and, uh, so the use that's being proposed, which is a warehouse type of use for equipment storage, uh, is allowed, uh, in this zone with a special permit. So a little bit of history, and I don't think any of you were here in two thousand nineteen, but, at that time, uh, Moore's only owned one of the lots, they owned a lot to the, to the west. And, um, Chad came in at that time and got an approval, uh, to put a building on that site. And, uh, did not construct that building, it would be, it was a smaller proposed building than the one that's being proposed tonight, and, uh, as time went by, he realized he needed more space, so he's able to acquire, uh, the property to the east. So now he's got the property, uh, uh, both properties that are shown in the application. And what this application seeks to do is merge those two, those two lots together, uh, and into one parcel, and then to construct a six thousand square foot, industrial building for equipment, uh, storage, and he'll, he'll provide you with some details about the operation, uh, in just a moment. So the access to the site, uh, Shannon can move the cursor there, it's gonna be off of, uh, off of Depot Place right there, yeah, with a new improved driveway. It'll come down into the site, there'll be parking, uh, six parking spaces there for, employees and whatever occasional visitors might be, and then there'll be the new building, uh, in that, in that location, uh, right where she's showing it to you. There'll be an eight-foot-high stockade fence installed along the southerly and easterly boundaries where, uh, we do have some residential, neighbors, uh, and we're proposing that in lieu of, uh, somewhat denser landscaping than, uh, than, than what we're proposing. Regulations will call for somewhat denser landscaping. Chad's been in touch with the neighbors, one of whom is here tonight, Heidi Tuttle. And it's his feeling, and I think, I think the neighborhood would probably agree with him, that the eight-foot-high stockade fence might do, a better job of, uh, shielding the operation than, than a slightly denser landscape plan. You'll see in a moment, there's certainly quite a bit of landscaping that is going in. That substitution of the fence for the, uh, for the denser landscaping though, will require, uh, the type of five, six vote that you were discussing on the last application. There are, uh, some staff comments, um, that you have, uh, dated August eighteenth, and we went over those in detail with, with, uh, Bruce and Shannon and Garrett at a meeting, uh, I think it was last week. Uh, and the, at that time, Chad and, uh, and his engineer, Mr. Moran, uh, committed to revising, the plans in such a way to address all of those comments, uh, to the satisfaction of the town staff. And, uh, Shan- Shannon has indicated in her agenda review that, uh, that these comments are not going to require material changes, to the site layout. And, uh, and that the staff is, uh, is, is willing to have those comments, uh, incorporated as, and being made conditions of, of your decision on, on the application. So with that, I'll ask Chad Moore to tell you a little bit about his business and, and the site, and then we'll follow up with comments from, uh, the engineer. Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, my name's Chad Moore, and as Bob indicated, I'm a second-generation certified arborist here in Unionville. We've been here for over thirty years, business started with my father. And we are very prideful to stay here in Farmington, serve this community in Farmington Valley. In twenty nineteen, as Bob indicated, we purchased fifty-five depot, we got approval for a two thousand square foot structure, for the same use, um, to basically park our fleet. We really don't leave this area too much. And so staying here was a focal point for us. Previously, the building was very close to H and S, which is located at forty-seven Depot Place. It was on that parcel with garage bays facing south, so currently facing the building that you see, uh, being proposed. We were a little bit constricted for space, and so it drove us to purchase this new parcel, and with that, we were able to orient the building, in the reverse to face Plainville Ave, which is where we're gonna be entering and exiting every day. Um, this is basically in an effort to minimize the amount of reversing that we have to do with trucks, uh, minimize noise. And just have quieter operation, basically, with the residences near. This is primarily a site for us to just store our machines, um, store some bulk earth materials, logs and wood chips. And, um, keep our home here local. I guess I open it up to any questions about our operation. Anything that you have for me? Okay.
So is, is Seamus gonna present then next, or?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Seamus, if you wanna take over. Is there, Seamus, you should be able to unmute your microphone.
Okay, can you guys hear me now? Does that work?
Yes. Yep.
Yeah, okay, excellent. All right, sorry, sorry, I couldn't be there. Uh, we did have a conflict, I have a daughter from two different locations and, uh, I just had to be at one of them, so I, I really apologize, but thank you guys for your time tonight and accommodating me. Um, my name is Seamus Moran, I'm a professional engineer in Connecticut. Uh, and I, uh, I work for H and H Engineering Associates in Mystic, and I'm the civil on the project. So we've already gone over some of the basics for it, so, um, Shannon, if it's all right, we'll just start on the site layout plan. I just, I wanted to go over on that sheet, the only reason for the last sheet was just to kinda show you where we were, which our team has already done. Um, so we'll just jump right into the site layout plan, which is the next sheet, if that's all right. Perfect, thank you. Actually, no, this is the existing additions plan, so this is perfect, so, right now, um, all we have on the site, the site is mostly wooded, it, there's some clearing, there's an existing shed on there. Um, there's some topography that undulates, but otherwise, it's, it's fairly, um, fairly empty, there's not a lot of improvements there, only the shed. And you can see in this upper left-hand corner is Depot Place, uh, the, the cul-de-sac of Depot Place ends, beyond our property lines to the, that's actually like northwest, the arrows for this are kinda funky, that, like, so that's north is kind of in the upper left-hand corner of the property. Um, so yeah, we're looking kinda northwest to Depot Place, so, um, now if we go to the site layout plan, we'll just walk you through what we're doing with the site. As you can kinda tell from the cover sheet, um, what we're looking to put in is a six thousand square foot metal building, on the southeastern portion of the property with a gravel parking lot, um, six parking spaces, including an accessible parking space. That accessible parking space will have a concrete walkway to the door. We are proposing an eighteen-foot-wide, uh, essentially driveway to get, um, across the DOT property that, within the right-of-way onto our property. Um, so that is paved up to our property line, uh, we're proposing a gate right there, right where the cursor is, thank you, Shannon, um, to get into the property, and then all of the, what you see on the property for parking is all gravel. Um, as we already discussed, there is an eight-foot-tall fence proposed around the entire perimeter of the project. Um, we are showing chain link along the northern and western property lines. Um, and we'll be showing stockade along the, yeah, I guess that's southern-ish, southern property line and the eastern property line. Perfect. The only other items on this, as I guess we'll get into, there's two stormwater management areas which are highlighted here, one is on the property, one is off the property. Um, actually, if we scroll down to the next sheet, I can get into the stormwater management a little bit more. The one off the property is, um, is right where Shannon is pointing out, um, that is a rain garden that's proposed. Back in two thousand nineteen, that was the original plan as well, was to propose a rain garden in there, to accommodate the additional runoff from the proposed driveway extension. The only comment we have from town staff regarding that rain garden is they just wanted to see if we could get that a little bit bigger. Um, I'll get into how it, what it accommodates, um, in a moment here, but the other stormwater management area is an onsite, uh, infiltration system, uh, Storm Tech SC seven forty underground infiltration system. Uh, the, the USGS soil mapping, uh, shows that we have type A soils on the property, which is great, um, should be very high infiltrating, so we use, for the, uh, for the underground infiltration, we use the, the default rate of eight point two seven inches per hour. That's per the twenty, uh, twenty-four, uh, water quality manual. We, there are notes that the testing has to be, or I'm sorry, the infiltration rate has to be confirmed with soil testing and permeability test, uh, before construction. Uh, we haven't done them yet, uh, we're hoping to do that, um, when there's machines on the property. Um, but we, we haven't done them yet, but there's a, certainly a plan in place, uh, to do soil testing and permeabilities for that infiltration, um, system there. The rain garden is actually not designed for the, that eight point two seven, because we have topsoil, um, on the, uh, obviously two grade in there, uh, we do have a, it's actually called a, it's a soil mix, there's like sixty, it's a sixty to eighty percent, um, eighty-five percent, sand, um, I believe it's about ten percent topsoil and then three to eight percent of a compost material. And when you blend all that together, it, it, it creates a permeable layer that also retains, um, retains stormwater, just long enough, so that way the, the grasses, uh, can treat the stormwater, um, while also allowing it to infiltrate. So it's not the eight point two seven inches, it's actually zero point five inches per hour infiltration rate. Um, and that's because it's, that ratio of that soil mix is designed to infiltrate at one inch per hour, and with the factor of safety of two, uh, it reduces it down to zero point five inches per hour. Um, back to stormwater management area, A, the, um, that underground infiltration system, sorry, that's, uh, A is the under, yeah, that one, sorry about that. So that system, um, is designed with an isolator row, so all of the flow that comes into this system, which includes the building rooftop, um, and most of the site, uh, improvements, go into this isolator row, and that isolator row is just essentially a, it's a plastic chambers that are wrapped in fabric. Uh, and those, that those chambers retain the, the soils, I'm sorry, the, the sediment, um, and oils and grease and anything like that in those chambers. Um, and that is designed, you, it only has to be for the, the water quality event, that's where most of the storms, uh, where most of that material comes out of, but, just by the product that we have, it's actually designed to, in excess of the twenty-five-year storm event, so it's almost to the hundred-year storm event, so almost all of the storms, that come, um, about this property will go through that isolator row and will be treated. Um, after it treats through the isolator, um, it's an infiltration system, like I said, so it will infiltrate, I believe it was through the, uh, where was it, I'm sorry, infiltrates through the two-year storm event, and then beyond the two-year storm event, it meters out, um, to the drainage pipe, that you can kinda see that directs it to the south into an existing drainage system in that easement, uh, along that southern property line. Um, so the actual, the peak rates for our design storm coming through there, are only, uh, for the ten-year storm event, it's zero point zero two, um, CFS, so it's, we almost can accommodate the ten-year storm event. Um, for the, for the twenty-five-year storm event, it's zero point three eight, uh, CFS, and the hundred-year storm event is zero point seven seven CFS. So it's very small, um, volumes and flows getting into that existing system. Um, the rain garden system, uh, which is B, which is to the north, that is designed, um, to infiltrate, in excess of the ten-year storm event, right now, um, there's zero point zero two inches of clearance between the spillway elevation, and the water surface elevation, uh, at the ten-year storm event. Um, but even beyond that, the ten and the twen- ten, twenty-five and one-hundred-year storm events are very small. The twenty-five-year storm event, twenty-five-year storm event is only zero point zero seven CFS, and the hundred-year storm event is zero point four nine, DFS. I think with that, we can move on to the utility sheet, which is, is the next sheet. We do have, uh, water is available in Depot Place, uh, so we're proposing to extend the water main onto our property. You can kinda see there's a, a line just off of the shaded, um, just within the shaded portion of that drive. We're proposing to extend the water main from the end of the cul-de-sac in Depot Place, onto our property and into the northern side of the building. Right there, perfect, thank you, Shannon. Um, and then on the southern side of the building is the outlet of the sanitary sewer system, the sanitary sewer line, runs through that easement to the south, so we're proposing a sanitary sewer line exiting the building, uh, connecting into the existing sanitary sewer system. We do have, uh, three hundred gallon oil-water separator proposed as well for the floor drains within the building. Um, obviously to capture any of that, um, any of those oils before discharging to the sanitary system. Um, lastly, the, uh, electric telephone cable actually comes from the western side, you can kinda see we have to go through the abutting property, in order to get to that utility pole, this was discussed, Chad discussed this at length, uh, with Eversource, and this is the, the most appropriate way to get power to the site. Uh, Chad has been in contact with that abutting neighbor, he knows this is the plan, they've discussed the plan, and there's actually, um, there is a letter in the file that says that he is in agreement, he's gonna work with Chad in order to make, um, to make all of this work as shown. Uh, Eversource, uh, required a gravel drive, uh, a twelve-foot-wide gravel drive in order to get there, so, that little gravel drive extension that you see from our parking area, that's just to access, um, to get, to gain access to the Eversource easement, um, that is required. Um, I think with that, we'll just, we can move on to the soil erosion sediment control, and I'll just move through these fairly quickly. Pretty standard soil erosion sediment control plan, we do have a temporary soil stockpile area. Um, I have it shown in the easement area, one of the, the town comments that we have to move that, which, that, that's a great point, we will not put that there, we're just gonna shift that. Um, I, I believe that's actually shown to be too large anyway, but, um, that can be moved really anywhere on the property. Uh, we have to add a temporary so, um, temporary sediment trap on the property, it's a pretty small drainage area. Um, but the plan is to put the temporary sediment trap up gradient of the catch basins. There's, uh, erosion control matting on all those steep slopes that are three to one or steeper, we actually don't have any steeper than three to one, but anything that is three to one, we're showing the erosion control matting on those slopes. Um, last but not least, we have, uh, silk fence shown in the downgrade limits of disturbance, and a construction entrance, uh, at the main entrance. and a construction entrance at the main entrance. It's only shown as 100 feet. That'll have to be extended to, I'm sorry, it's shown as 50 feet and that has to be extended to 100 feet. And I believe that is it for my portion of the plan. I don't know if we want to pass it back to Chad or to Robert for final notes before opening up to the commission, but I think that's, that's it for my end.
All right. Thank you very much. I've gotten word we're ready for commission questions. So why don't we do that? Liz, start with you.
Okay, my question I was a little unsure of, and this is my own, not being great at reading maps, but the Eversource easement is, I'm not, I don't quite understand what's going on there. Is that a pole that's already existing? Is that?
Hello again. Yeah, so I spoke with Eversource. That was not previously part of our approved plans in 2019. Apparently Eversource has changed their code and they require this access drive now. So we are taking the same route. The existing pole is where Shannon is pointing to. It's just off of 47 Depot Place and currently that's the last pole on Depot. And 47 feeds overhead wires off of that. We're going to come underground off of that pole and run right behind 47 into our property. They require this road with a gate for their access if they ever need to service the underground conduit. But it's not a road that's going to be used in any event other than some sort of emergency.
Okay, okay. That makes more sense. I just wasn't quite sure if it was something there existing or.
No, it's currently all gravel back there pretty much anyways. We just have to kind of grade it up to our property and provide some sort of gated entrance for them.
Okay, okay. And, and are there other easements and everything, being that this is an old rail line and?
We will need an, so upon approval from the town, we will need to secure an easement with the DOT Rails Department for the access drive extension and that's for the water main and the driveway. So we'll have to sort that out with them upon approval. And we also are going to be getting a electrical utility easement coordinated between Eversource, myself and 47 Depot Place upon approval as well.
Okay, a lot of moving parts, but it sounds like you got to get them all under consideration.
Yeah, that's correct.
Uh, thank you for the presentation. I think that's it for now.
Okay.
Dave? So I don't know if I understood, in terms of utilizing your driveway, it goes out to Depot Place or is it going to, I heard something about Plainville Avenue?
So the only entrance from Depot Place is Plainville Avenue. So as we go in and out day to day, we exit off of Depot onto Plainville Avenue. So essentially, like I was speaking to the orientation of the, of the garage itself, our bays will be facing Plainville Avenue. So trucks can just drive straight out in the morning, back in at the end of the day, drive straight out in the morning. And it'll just minimize noise disturbance on a day-to-day basis.
And do we have any concern about, do you have more trucks coming after it's all done? Is it going to increase any traffic or?
I don't know if I understand.
So once, once you get the new building, are you anticipating you're going to have more equipment, more trucks?
We're, we're a two-fleet company. That's pretty much what this building is designed for. We'll be parking two fleets side by side, ready to leave on a day-to-day basis.
And a little different question, we're kind of, are you doing any processing of wood while you're there?
We're going to be handling day-to-day material. So as logs come back from jobs and wood chips and any sort of material, we'll be handling that onsite. We did not, that was one of the town comments, we didn't specifically show where we're going to be doing that, which we will add. It's going to be in the, I believe it's northeast, northwest corner. Essentially, yeah, right off of, obviously not on the stormwater system, but we'll be storing material in there.
I'm also thinking about some of the noise too for people.
I mean, we adhered last time to an hours of operation. That was on our previous set of plans. If I remember correctly, it was seven to seven to five or six PM or something like that, which I'm fine with adhering to as well. The, the only caveat I have with that is the understanding that we, we are a 24-hour storm response service. So if a tree falls on someone's house in emergency, we do need to respond. And that's really anytime. But as far as onsite managing of material, we'll stay within whatever operating hours are applied.
All right. I have no other questions. Thanks.
Thank you.
I, I think from what I gather, you need two, five, six votes from us in addition to the general approval. So the first one of those is to reduce the setback to 30 feet, which I assume is from 100. We haven't talked about that a little bit, so I'd like to understand where that is a little bit more and what that, what that means.
Yeah, so Shannon is sort of pointing to it. So it's the easterly
Right there.
Buffer there. So we are proposing to build at a, I believe it's a 31-foot distance to that property line, the back of the building. And that's again, in an effort to just be able to adequately back our trucks in on a day-to-day basis. There is existing forest on the opposite adjoining property there on Berry Lane. But we do have landscaping that we are going to be putting in as well as an eight-foot stockade fence there as well.
And if you, if you don't get approval for that, what's the impact for you? Does the building have to be smaller?
The building has to shift another 10 feet towards Plainville Avenue.
And you have it that way just because you want additional room for backing up?
Right, ease of maneuver for trucks and trailers.
All right. And then the, the second five, six vote was with respect to plantings, to reduce the plantings by 25% in lieu of a stockade fence, putting that up so you have less plantings?
Yeah, and that's more to do with the southwest buffer line on that'd be Forest Street. And the, the main reason for that is due to that sanitary sewer easement that's there. It constricts the area that we can actually landscape. So we can't put anything on that easement, which brings our buffer closer to the structure, which kind of puts a disadvantage on plants being able to block those neighbors out. So we're seeking to put up a taller fence, which is more of an immediate buffer to them, to give the plants longer time to really take course and screen us out. It, it wouldn't necess, it wouldn't be necessary if we were able to plant on the other side of that easement and be closer to the residences because of like the vantage point from them to us. But we have to sort of sink all of the green life closer to us. So it's just in an effort to give it time to grow.
So, so the plantings are going to be on your side of the fence? There'll be nothing on the residents?
That's correct. The residents will be looking at the stockade.
Willing to do that to make it look better as it's just like a wall for them, right?
Exactly. Yeah, it's going to be aesthetically pleasing. It's really the best we can do given the circumstance.
Understood. Okay, let me process what you've, what you've told me and pass on.
I kind of have the same question as you. So I mean, there are neighbors here.
Yes, that's correct.
Right? So I guess before I ask the questions, do we hear from them?
Well, let's go through, we'll go through all the.
It was just that. It was usually like, you know, when you put up a fence, you put up the finished side towards your, your neighbors and you look at the unfinished side. And if it's an eight-foot stockade fence with, with no plantings, then yeah, you're really kind of looking at a wall of wood. So I just wanted to see what, how the neighbors felt about that.
So, yeah, I, I hope that they all do speak up. The, the, we worked very closely. I worked with the landscape architect on this. The eight-foot stockade fence that we're proposing is going to have a finished side towards the neighbors. And we specifically chose Green Giant Arbor Viety as the hedge. The plant spacing was intentional for that to grow into a wall at maturity. And it's a fast rate growing species. So we'll be able to have them achieve a height to screen us out and maintain that height for years to come. So it's not a towering tree that's going to turn into trunk at any point in time. It's going to be a really nice dense hedge. So essentially we'll be creating a stockade aesthetically pleasing eight-foot wall and then green life above that as it continues to grow. Thank you.
Peter?
Thank you. No, no questions for me at this time.
Okay, I think I'm good. I think commissioners have asked questions up to this point. So this is a public hearing. So if there's anybody in the room that would like to speak for an opposition, please come on up to the podium. And please introduce yourself with name and address as well, please.
Hi, I'm Marie Perouse. I reside and own property at 65 Forest Street. This is my daughter Diane. She resides with me. You mentioned 8280 Forest Street. I don't know whereabouts that would be in conjunction with the rest of Forest Street.
That property, that's the actual address of this property. 8280 is the second piece of land. And that's how it is known in the town of Farmington, 8280 Forest Street. It had been part of the Herlocks property, I believe originally. I'd have to go back and take a look at this.
Okay, so that, that used to be a, I think a dirt road?
Maybe.
Going down, okay.
It may be. And that's, that's how it's known as 8280 Forest Street. So that's how it has to be identified in the legal notices.
Part of our question, I believe, was already answered. You said that there would be no traffic coming down Forest Street, only through Depot Place.
That's correct.
Okay, that was our big concern because so many new neighbors have moved in and they all have little kids.
And we're at 65, which is, was next to the Herlocks. So that's very close.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're just in the depot place.
We can be in our backyard.
Okay, that, that was our big concern. And you know, as far as noise, I'm an old woman. I don't care. As far as I'm concerned, noise is progress. So, you know.
Yeah, we, like I said, our biggest concern was.
Noise, noise doesn't bother me as far as, you know, as long as it's reasonable noise and it's progress, you know, it's, except when I go to sleep.
Thank you so much.
Don't drive the trucks at night.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the room? I see you're getting ready to get up. Come on up.
My name's Heidi Tuttle. I live at 111 Forest Street. I'm the last house on the left. So that's southeast abutting property. I've worked with Chad on the fence and the giant green Arbor Viety's. I don't know the scientific word. I'm very comfortable. It provides both a sound buffer and the greenery that I'm looking for. I also know that there's a sewer lien, sewer right-of-way. That's back there too, that limits Chad as to, I'm sorry, I should say more in tree service. As to what they can plant and where. So looking at the fence, I know they can't plant too much closer to my home. But the, but the fence and the giant green Arbor Viety's provide exactly what I need for privacy in my backyard and my pool. I also wanted to speak to the Berry Lane boundary. That is all parking on Berry Lane. There's a spit of woods between, I think actually the town owns it, between my house and Berry Lane. The LaShacks owned it and gave it to the town and long, long-term history. And so as far as the trees and the setback line, they're abutting parking. So it's not like they're against a building or a residence. And I think that's a positive thing too. So I'm in favor of this plan. And I hope you support it.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Anyone else in the room that would like to speak for an opposition to this application? Shannon, want to check online?
Okay, if anyone has called in regarding the 55 Depot Place, 8280 Forest rain drive application, please raise your hand. Yeah, using the feature in Zoom, you'll be acknowledged to address the commission. Again, if anyone has called in regarding the more in tree service application at 55 Depot Place and 8280 Forest Street, please raise your hand using the feature in Zoom to address the commission. Mr. Chair, there are no hands raised. If I may, there were two letters that were submitted with the application. So the applicant provided these, but I do want to have them entered into the record. It's acknowledgement of future development. And this is from the owner at 55, sorry, this is from I don't know, Chad, who's this from? Sorry, Miles Ultimus 67 Forest Street. Sorry. I'm trying to read the signature and everything. So anyhow, Miles Ultimus 67 Forest Street. Acknowledgement of the development process and the construction development. I can show again where that property is in relation. And then there's a second letter from Greg Giannfrido, H&amp;S Truck Repair. This is the property at 47 Depot Place where the easement and access is required. So both of those were entered into the record as part of the application that Mr. Moran provided to us.
Okay, thank you, Shannon.
Yes.
Any other questions, commissioners?
One did come up.
Okay, please go ahead, Liz.
Mr. Moran, you say you have a fleet of two. Is that truck, chipper, what is that composed of? I'm curious.
Yeah, that's correct. So we, we specialize in tree preservation and large removal. And those services require chip trucks and specific machines to carry out that work. So this building specifically is going to be housing chippers, trucks and aerial lifts. We have spider lifts that get into backyards. So those machines will be parked in daily. They are used almost daily. And they roll out in the morning to carry out their work.
And you're a 12-month-a-year business, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm assuming when you say it's a lot less noisy to do it this way, so you don't have the back trucks out in the morning, you're talking about the beep, beep, beep.
Right, so.
Vehicle backing out.
Right, so that basically orienting the structure this way, we'll be able to pull straight out and drive out in the morning.
And it's just the, the truck, just the exhaust noise and not the beep, beep, beeps.
That's correct. All the, all the backup alarms and stuff will be at the end of the day as opposed to the beginning of the day.
Okay.
So the idea with this building being so big is it allows us depth to back the trucks in with the trailers on them. So we don't have to line up the trailers in the morning. We can bring everything in, drive out in the morning. It's the, the cleanest way we can carry out this. So, thank you.
And you had said seven to five on hours. Do we know what it was from the 2019?
I don't.
I don't remember. It, it is on record with the previous set of plans. I'll agree to whatever was on that.
That's fine. Then we can look that up and
Okay.
Go with that. So I'm, I'm assuming it's seven, it wouldn't have gone past seven to seven and then there's noise ordinance, so.
I think it was seven to six.
Is probably the most reasonable.
Okay.
So, understanding that's for active, and then the noise ordinance, if you have onsite work, then the noise ordinance is going to supersede any reduction, you know, that might be reduced up more for onsite work. And certainly understanding if there's emergency storm response, then that's a whole nother thing. But there's not, you don't do snow remote, you don't have snow removal services that you provide, correct?
Not outside of the parcel.
Correct, right. So on a regular basis in the winter. Correct, would you, right. So on a regular basis in the winter time, you are not responding at three AM to clear multiple parking lots.
No.
Would be your own. If there's, with a snow event, there's an associ- tree issue. That's at the only time then, that you would be responding then in the middle of the night.
That's correct. Yeah, we're, we're just a tree service.
Um, sorry, just uh, this is Seamus Moran. I just looked it up. Um, it did say the original twenty nineteen one was. Our operation between seven AM and six PM, um, Monday through Saturday, uh, and also the emergency, uh. The emergency provisions were in here as well. Is that what, Chad, is that what, you were looking for seven to six, is that correct?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, that's, that's consistent.
From the comments that we heard this evening, I'm, I'm.
Right, just one consistency with whatever.
Agreed.
Nineteen is all.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Something about photometric plan.
I don't think so. You want to ask about it, go for it.
Yeah, um.
I, I did not provide a photometric plan. We are going to be putting some lighting on the building when we go in front of the building department and. Provide the details on the actual structure, uh, but nothing's going to be illuminating parking lot or entrances, uh, nothing like that. No, no.
And what staff will review that at the time that it comes in to ensure that they're all downcast, not floodlights. Um, I think we had discussed, if needed, maybe put something on a motion sensor so that if an overnight response is needed. It can come on sufficient to illuminate what they need to and then go off after fifteen or twenty minutes. A, you know, a limited timeframe so that it's not on overnight.
It also notes that um, a lot merger plan is required. Is that a fairly straightforward thing or is?
Correct. It's just the surveyors have to, going to have to put together a, a plan to file on the land records. Joining the two properties and providing the legal description. So right now they're two separate. As it's shown, it was two separate properties, so that'll need to get, to get merged.
Everybody comfortable with closing the public hearing at this point?
Yes.
Yep, okay. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Can we get a motion in a second?
With the two parts, so you have to do anything special, the motion, or you just?
Do you want to discuss it first a little bit or?
I was going to do the motions and then discuss, okay.
So that's.
Amend the motions.
So correct, so you can motion and discuss whether or not you want to include the five, six vote. In this is completely up to the commission. So you can include it like you did the last one.
Yeah.
If there's some concern, you want to separate them out, you can do that as well. So that's completely at the discretion of the commission. And then what we would like to see, the items, rate the items to consider both. All sets of staff comments, they, the, the engineering ones issued in mid-August as well as. Uh, the few items that I enumerated. Um, in the staff report, the agenda review would be helpful to include those.
Yes, I'm just requesting a motion in a second just to get the process started, not with any particular.
Yeah, how do we add those in there?
So it can just be, so we can start with a motion to approve the application because we want to do it in the affirmative anyhow. So just start with a motion to approve and then a second.
All right.
And then through to the discussion. You can hopefully ascertain whether or not you want that five, the, the landscaping waivers in there or not. And then you could amend the motion accordingly if needed. And then we can vote. And then if we need to have separate votes, we can do those separately.
Great.
So we can do, it can be all one, but we'll start with the one.
All right, I'll start with the one then. I would like to uh, make a motion to approve the application for a special permit and site plan approval. Uh, made by Moore and Tree Service LLC for a proposed warehouse facility. The storage of equipment for a tree service company in areas outside storage at fifty-five depot place and eighty-two eighty Forest Street in C one zone.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Thoughts, commissioners?
My thoughts, I think. So, uh, I think as long as the, we think all the engineering comments, I, I think. From the neighbors' appeal, um, comments that the. The buffer reduction, I, I see, it seems like. It's been worked out and that it is a. It's, I guess it's reasonable, in my opinion.
Yeah, I, um, I was happy to hear about the traffic thing. It's my, my concerns there. And then I was worried about people looking at a fence. I didn't seem opposed to looking at the fence. Yeah, so um, th- those are my two.
Okay.
Two big things, so.
Bruce?
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm kind of back and forth. I, I'm ordinarily, I, I, I don't like this plan and I don't like the things there. On the other hand, w- we're dealing with a decades-old, solid citizen Farmington business who's been here a long time. That, that counts for something.
Yeah.
Um, we don't have opposition from the, the public and in any strong way, like the reduction of the. To thirty feet, it does back up onto a parking lot. So a- a- all those things mitigate.
Yeah.
Uh, for me to the point that I, that I don't think I would, um, I would stand in opposition, uh, like I might on another day or another. Uh, another thing.
All right, thanks, Bruce. Mike, any thoughts?
No, I feel like they did a good job, um. Looking out for their neighbors.
Yeah.
And they have the support of their neighbors and they're, uh, you know, been in town doing business for a long time and they're here to actually support us as a community.
Yeah.
If and when we need them, so, uh, I don't see any problem with that. That wasn't me.
Did we get a cricket in?
If PD shows up, I'll deal with it.
The, the reason I asked about the, the, the beeping is because that, that sound is. Is the, the sound that everybody can hear for forever and ever and ever. So like situating the building, getting a bigger building, situating it properly. So you're not making that alarm, you know, the backup alarms constantly in the morning is, is, I think, good for the neighborhood.
The crickets agree. Yeah. Peter?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Peter, any?
Yeah, I mean, I would just echo the co- I would just echo the comments that uh, others have made. You know, I, I think the applicants be commended for. Taking the initiative to reach out and work with the neighbors. I think that means a lot. Think it's a thoughtful way out and I, I don't really have any concerns, uh, given. The support from the neighbors and the nature of the uh, abutting property with the parking. Uh, I don't see any issue with reducing the setback there, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in agreement with all of you, I think, you know. Thank you so much for the work that you did, Mister Moran, with the, the neighbors. It makes obviously for a much easier application process for you and for us and for them. So. Um, anytime that happens, um, it's not always trust us. Um, from the folks that sit up here, it doesn't always happen. So very appreciative of. Of the work done beforehand, um, to come to a good result. So, are we okay voting on the? The motion as was.
Yep.
So now, so now we need to amend the motion.
Yeah.
Well, if you all agree, then the motion needs to be amended to add the two, five, six vote. Please, and to add in the um. The, no, not the, the engineer, the comments, so that, that all staff comments are addressed to the satisfaction of town staff. So Dave can amend it, Liz can second the amended, and then we can proceed.
To do, all right.
I know, I, I'm just.
Do you want to do it?
Yeah, okay. All right, look at it. Now I have to say before, I'm just amending my motion.
Correct.
Correct.
My emotion, not my emotion, my motion. Um, include um, uh, re- permitting a reduced buffer width of thirty feet along the eastern property line with no berm. And to reduce the quantity of buffer plantings by twenty-five percent along the eastern and southern property lines. Um, to the status and all this to the satisfaction of engineering and.
And I seconded again.
All right. Any more discussion, we're good. Okay, all those in favor? I, opposed. Opposed extensions. Motion passes unanimously. I'll state it. I know that it's a timing thing there.
I know.
Best of luck to you.
Good luck, Mister Moran.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. Clear the room, yeah.
Clear the room, everyone.
Almost. Close. We have just a handful of things, everyone. So bear with me. This should be um. Fairly straightforward for everybody. I'm going to get all these attachments open so that we can just roll through them.
Like.
Okay, so we have a few planners report items. So the first one is a new tenant. So this is. It's not going to work very well. All right, we're going to close that and try again. Watch files. All right. She can play this game. Thank you. Let's see if it's going to play nicer this way. It won't open properly for me on the, uh, there we go. I'm not going to touch it. Okay, so this is at ten fifty-one Farmington Avenue. Um, it's about mid-block on Farmington Avenue between. It's probably closer to Farmington Center. There's multiple buildings. We've had multiple tenants come in for new signs in this area. It's an existing tenant space. They're putting up a new sign. Um, there are peg letters that are going to be attached. They're individual black letters, three D letters above. Blue on the wall of the storefront. And it's just they're not, not internally illuminated, that's correct. I believe there's an existing light bar that is up over, that is going to provide illumination for that sign. Ultimately, I'm assuming there'll be some adhesive sign with hours of operation and, and probably something else on the uh, the door. Um, but if there's no objection, then i- it's four square feet. It meets all the area. It's all the standardized area, all the signs are the same in this complex, so. Um, if you're in agreement, I'll have this proceed to building permit. There's no question or objection.
Sounds good.
So that's that. I'm going to go to Mama Con's and then I'll come back to the affordable housing so that we can. If we want, where there's a little more chat on that one is fine. So. Green tea is taking over where Mama Con's is. I, I think it's similar family. Entities, so there's the sign that's over the building. It's twenty-nine point five square feet. The linear frontage of the building is thirty linear feet, so the twenty-nine and a half square feet is appropriate. It appears to match the size of the existing sign, the Mama Con's that's over it. And then there's a small monument sign by the roadway. And this panel, the top panel is actually what is going to go in and replace, you know, on the roadway. And that's about seven point six square feet. So again, it's um, like for like replacement, uh, identical. So if we're in agreement. I'll have this proceed to building permit as well without formal sign applications. It's not a new sign. All good, I'm getting all head nods.
Sounds good, Shannon.
And then, uh, the last meeting, there was a question came up about where we are with affordable housing percentage and. How this all works. And we had talked about it a little bit and uh, I thought, why not just? Share everything. It's all public information. It's all on the DOH website anyway. But we get, um, so this letter is addressed to us on March twenty-fifth of, or March first of this year, excuse me, of twenty twenty-five. And we get this, um, this comes out and it provides an explanation. So it, it, it says, right, that the. Uh, I have ten percent of all dwelling units in the municipality are assisted. Housing are currently financed by CHFA. Mortgages or subject to binding uh, recorded deeds containing covenants and restrictions which require dwellings be sold. Or rented at below prices of preserved units for which persons or families paying thirty percent of less of income. Income is equal, uh, less than or equal to eighty percent of the median income. And then there's a mobile manufactured home portion as well. So it's, and this all ties, it's all, all this language. All ties to Connecticut General Statute, dash thirty G. So, and then there's additional changes, right? It talks about changes in the number of units counting towards the ten percent. Are impacted by several items, the relocation of house, households using eight, uh, section eight vouchers. Expiration of deed restrictions, demolition of buildings, and the additions of units created uh, and completed during. The twenty-three, twenty-four program year. In June, we get a similar letter, um, that's asking for our new affordable housing. And they work on a fiscal year, July one to June thirtieth. So Garrett's responded and that's for COs that are done from July one to June thirtieth. So our eighty and ninety South Road have now been reported. Right, for this year. And then we have to respond by October first or October fifteenth, something to that effect. Garrett's already responded on our behalf. And those then will be added in. So when we get our list. And we get a letter in March of twenty-six, twenty twenty-six, it'll be the twenty twenty-five Affordable Housing Appeals List, right? Because they, they calibrate all of it based on the data they get in twenty-five, right? And then that holds us. And it's all based on the twenty twenty census. So our denominator, right, our housing denominator is based on the hot twenty twenty census that holds for ten years. We're going to have a twenty thirty census. And in twenty twenty census, I think the numbers became available in twenty twenty-two. I think there was a delay, partially impacted by COVID. So twenty twenty thirty census, whenever those numbers are available. Then that's going to change our denominator because it takes the total housing and then it's what percentage. So these are all the exempt municipalities are at the top, um, varying percentage rates. And then these are the non-exempt municipalities. So we've got, and, and unfortunately, they don't carry this header. Onto each page, but you've got the census, right? So that's our house, our total housing number. Government assisted tenant rental, CHFA deed restricted, and then the total, total assisted units and then the percent. So really, you're taking this total, dividing it into by this, and that's giving you your percentage. And so Farmington is down here. We take this total. Divided by, um, so this is the total that's assisted by our total housing, gives us the eight point eight eight. I think I had it noted, uh, at the last meeting that with eighty and ninety South Road coming on, there's sixty-five units. It's going to. We're estimating that's going to put us up about, uh, roughly nine point three percent, understanding. Um, we don't have any deed restricted that is coming off, but it's those section eight vouchers that we, that are come and go. We, we don't have any control over the, how that population moves throughout the state. So that's, that's where we are. And then as we, uh, we've got sixteen hundred as Kyle Richards mentioned. Uh, this evening that some of those are going to come on in October. So they aren't going to count, right? So that we had a July or June thirtieth cutoff. But they will come in then when our next reporting, those will get added in. Those will get added in on the next reporting. So that's where we are. And then in twenty thirty. We'll deal with our denominator shift. So. Housing, although the market rate housing, so housing units, say in Tianbark or in Dominique's Court or La Jardin or. All the, right, that all starts play, the apartment complexes that don't have any affordable. At fifteen Farm Springs Lane, eighty Batterston Park. So that's. Going to shift us the other way. That's going to move us away from ten percent. As we. Look into the future and look at our twenty thirty number. So. Tackle that as needed.
And, and the goal is ten percent?
So that's, so the ten percent, it's not so. The term goal, I would say is subjective. It depends on. Who you speak with and what your perception is on housing need. So the ten percent is tied to the Connecticut general statute regulation that eight dash thirty G regulation. And at ten percent. The town of Farmington, once we hit that ten percent. We are no longer subject. To. That eight dash thirty G regulation in that. The burden of proof. So right now, if an applicant submits an application to us under eight dash thirty G for affordable housing. If, if. The boxes are checked. Then the, our, our commission has very little. Discretion. In the review and or denial of an application. And the burden of proof for the denial of the application. Shifts the commission. It is not the applicant as it traditionally would be. Should it be appealed? So if the commission were to deny an application. Today, an affordable housing application today and we're at eight point eight percent. And the applicant chose to appeal. They do not have the burden of proof to show why. Your decision was erroneous. We have the burden of proof of showing. Why it is founded on solid ground.
Yeah.
And. The elements that we have at our disposal for making that case are very limited, again, based on. Case history in the state of Connecticut as well as what's enumerated in the general statutes. Once we hit ten percent. That shifts back to the applicant. So the applicant then would have to bear. The, so they could still appeal a decision, but the applicant would bear the burden of proof shown to demonstrate that the commission acted. Erroniously. In their decision-making process. So that's what that ten percent is. It really isn't a goal as far as whether or not there's enough housing. You can read, there's. Multiple reports. And documentation and even our own affordable housing study. That Farmington has and we will be redoing in the next calendar year. Discusses the needs of housing in Farmington and in Connecticut. And. If you just look at the numbers, it's. There's still a need. And then that's for, again, affordable housing, not necessarily market rate or, or higher end housing. There is a. A section of housing need. From an affordability standpoint, based on the numbers that we have available to us.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Well, Jerry, it's also fair to say that we've been somewhat lucky with the developers that have chosen to build affordable housing that they haven't tried to.
Correct.
I'm seeing a fair number of stories from other towns where unwelcome developments are coming in.
Correct. So you can.
Under eight dash thirty G.
Yeah.
It's just, it's a control thing. Do we have any control over?
So we get to ten percent and we have more control.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. So, and it is. And, and Scott tears, yes, we are. Fortunate that the development type that has come through. And the developer that chooses to continue to do this. Does work. With staff, we push at some of the regulation items. We have asked for additional landscaping. We've asked for changes to lighting. We've asked. For. A variety of things that perhaps others would not even consider.
It's like so far, so good.
So, cor- correct.
Let's get to ten.
But yeah, so the sixteen hundred on New Britain now brings us to.
So I'm not sure, Garrett doesn't think sixteen hundred gets us quite to ten percent. But then we have four oh two and we're gonna have to dig a little deeper. So four oh two use the build for CT.
Oh, that's right.
And they, they went at a hundred percent AMI, not eighty percent, which is allowed. So the build for CT. Program is a hundred and I believe it's from eighty percent to a hundred twenty percent. So. How the math worked for them a- and originally it was approved at all market rate. So they, they did this of their own volition and went. And use the build for CT program through CHFA. But at a hundred percent AMI. So we are gonna have to get additional clarification. From. DOH. As to whether or not we will get any credit for that. We're hopeful that we'll have some.
Yeah.
But it is not going to be nearly as impactful because it, eighty and ninety South Road and it's sixteen hundred New Britain Avenue. It's a graduated. So some of those units are even at thirty percent. AMI, some, we've got sixty, eighty, and then market rate. And there's credits per housing unit. So at eighty percent AMI, I wanna, and I just looked at it. Garrett had just sent it to me today too. I want to say at eighty percent. We get one point five credits per unit. That's at eighty percent. And then at sixty percent, we get two units of credit and at thirty percent, we get two and a half units of credit. And again, this is all spelled out. Between the Connecticut's general statutes and then the. Our CSA, the regulations for state agencies, for Connecticut state agencies. On to how to run through this math. Because we can also, i- it's looked at globally from a. Credit standpoint, right, and how you. Are allocated. So, but that's, that's a separate allocation that we keep track of.
And that eleven thousand six hundred and sixty-seven is the current data that we got from seven, from five years ago.
The twenty twenty housing census, correct.
So we as a town should have some way of knowing how many buildings we constructed.
Well, we do. So we do. So we, we can estimate, we absolutely can estimate this. So we understand, so. We, we'd have to take a static look at the twenty twenty and then start to add in building permits since then. For housing, for new housing and new apartments.
Yeah.
And we can estimate and get fairly close. So, yeah, I, I. Without a doubt, we're, we're now, we're gonna hit the ten percent and then we're gonna in twenty thirty. Drop back off. Now, how far? I don't have it at my fingertips.
We make decisions moving forward. We're gonna have to have that in the back room.
To a certain extent, I mean, this is something that fluctuates. There's communities around us. Avon is at. Four point one five percent. Right? Burlington is at two point one two percent. Simsberry. Is at four point eight one percent. Canton, I think is the next. Canton is close. Canton's eight point five. So, right, so all our immediate, you know, Plainville and New Britain, I think maybe up in the top, they may be up here. I'm going to, uh, Plainfield, no, New Britain is at nineteen. Plainville is down here. At seven point six. Right? So. We're really strong. We continue to be really strong. I don't think we're gonna drop off a cliff in twenty twenty. You know, certainly the. The apartment complexes that have come in. That density of housing is notable. But it's not going to push us off a cliff with respect to our percentage. We're now not going to drop to two percent. Again, I'd have to start to run the math and I haven't. We've done it. So when we were, again, when we did this, we did the, the housing. Affordable housing deep dive last summer. We had ran a whole bunch of if this, then this, if this, then this, if we built everything and it was all market rate, we were here, right? So. We ran all the permutations. So at this point, we're just kind of focused here. It kind of. Those are constructed and we can't undo that. We can do a benchmark for the commission so that we've got it. And then we can decide, you know, as, as you move forward, but you can't. We can't deny a subdivision application either, just because we're concerned. So we'd have to do a regulation change if, if that's what the commission really wants to do. And we had had that conversation about inclusionary zoning and the pluses and minuses with that and, and how that all gets set up. So some of this, we have to just kind of take it incremental steps and, and. Have appropriate conversations to a certain extent as it comes. Not saying we shouldn't be proactive and have some understanding about where we are. But the commission will have to decide if there's an overall regulation change that they think they want to tackle from a housing standpoint.
Yeah, West Hartford recently. Felt they were above ten percent.
Correct. And I.
It was the summer they talked about and someone was going to. Live a proposal and. And he said, no, not quite.
Yeah, they must have, so it must have come in after this list.
I think it was they.
They must have got a rerun of it. So West Hartford, because they were at eight point, so on this list that just came out in the summer. Or sorry, in March. That it, they were at eight percent. Yeah.
Just for maybe, for maybe an article in the paper.
Right. Right. Yeah. Okay. So this is all, it was posted at the website. So you can download it if you want it, or I can email it to you separately if you want it, but we've got it at our fingertips. We can send it to you at any point in time if there's a question that comes up. But hopefully this was helpful and answered some of the questions that came up at the last meeting.
Yeah, so very interesting.
Yeah, and I don't have anything. There is a CROGS meeting, their. Community meetings that they're having. One of them is this Wednesday in Southington. I'll be going. I'll report back to the commission. On that, to the extent that there's. Anything noteworthy to share, I will do so. Okay. And that's all I've got for you this evening, unless anybody has any questions for me. All quiet this evening, okay? All right.
Let's get a motion in a second for the minutes of the September.
I'd like to make a motion to approve minutes of the September.
What? Yep, we got it.
I'm reading there, yeah. September eighth, twenty twenty-five Town Plan and Zoning Commission meeting.
Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Extentions, motion passes.
All right.
Took me to the end, Peter, to realize there's a delay on your vote.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
All right.